Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'm calling the September 5th City Council Meeting to Order. Councilmember Ray has an excused absence this evening. As a reminder, we still continue to have remote aspects to our meetings, and both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's meeting is going to start with a few items of special business. The first one is ID 1368. This is a Constitution Day proclamation where we recognize the work of our courts. And I'd like to invite Judge Stewart and Lead Judicial Specialist Nikki Meister to the lectern. We have two. Just to make it confusing, and for those doing public testimony later, go right ahead. That's the way council can see you the best. This is my way of presenting this group to you. So welcome, both of you. Nice to see you. Whereas the United States Constitution has shaped the progress, values, and laws of this country, Washington State, and the city of Issaquah, and September 17th is commonly known as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day to commemorate the signing of the U.S. Constitution in Philadelphia on September 17th, 1787. And whereas National Constitution Day was developed to honor the principles of the Constitution and the striving towards a more perfect union, and Citizenship Day is recognized to welcome and celebrate new citizens of the United States to our community. Whereas the city of Issaquah strives to embody the values espoused in the Constitution, empower citizens to participate in government and abide by its laws and promise, and whereas the Issaquah Municipal Court plays a vital role in upholding the Constitution, establishing and maintaining public trust and confidence through jurisprudence and consistent service to the Issaquah community, including the delivery of court services to the cities of Duval, North Bend, and Snoqualmie; and whereas the Issaquah Municipal Court has introduced innovative, problem-solving approaches to better serve the common welfare and abide by the ideals of the Constitution; and whereas it is appropriate to acknowledge and thank Issaquah Municipal Court staff on the celebration of the 236th anniversary of the Constitution's signing. Now therefore, I, Mary Lou Polly, the mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2023, to be Constitution Day in the city of Issaquah, and I invite the community to join me in thanking Issaquah's municipal court employees for their service and outstanding contributions and the vital role they play in upholding the Constitution. Thank you so much for all you do. And as he usually does, Judge has some words of wisdom to share with us all. The microphone is yours.
I don't know if I have any real words of wisdom. What I told Nikki was I was going to have her speak, and she threatened me, so steps away. I just want to thank the council, the mayor, for all the support you have for the court. We've loved having folks especially come over for our community court. I want to tell you, our next graduation is September 21st in the afternoon. We have two really, really good young people that are going to go through the graduation. Both of them very young, both of them have been with us for six or eight months or so, and I think it's going to be a lot of fun. So anybody who wants to come over, members of the community, you're invited as well. Community court's a pretty cool thing. Community court's a pretty cool thing. It's a program where you take folks out at the traditional route of arraignment, pre-trial. Most folks end up pleading guilty or convicted of something, and then there's threats of jail and stuff like that. And what you do is you bring them to the court, and from the court setting, you give them access to the resources that they need in the community. And so someone comes in, we do an evaluation of them, determine what they need: mental health treatment, alcohol, drug treatment, housing, food. And the Zoom world, which we discovered when this first started during COVID, has allowed us to bring more resources than a jurisdiction decided in Issaquah typically would have, because we have kiosks set up in the hallway, and we zoom into a resource room, and the resources are in that room, and they go off and they meet with the folks that address their needs. They then develop a plan, and essentially, we turn folks around by giving them the resources they need to hopefully pull them out of the criminal justice system, allow them to be happy, productive members of the community. We do it every Thursday, except during jury week. Every Thursday, we have a resource room followed by a court. It's always open to the public. We encourage folks to come in. Sometimes Mayor Polly was here with the county council member on Thursday, and they got a surprise, because one of our community court members had just accepted a full-ride scholarship at Grambling University to teach children of underprivileged backgrounds, wants to be a teacher, and he read us a letter that he wrote that is part of his application process that was just very moving. And sometimes things like that happen in that court. It's really, really a good experience. And so far, the court's been funded fully by the state. We've applied for grants. We've successfully been successful on the grants. We have a community court coordinator that assists. What's the program that she's got the volunteers working at? But she finds volunteer opportunities within the city of Issaquah and such. And one of the things they have to do in community court is they have to volunteer for the community, because the idea is that they're giving back to the community as well as receiving the benefit. And the goal is, and these are not with the less serious crimes that we have, the goal is that this person with a limited history, they get the resources they need to give back to the community, they earn the benefit of a dismissal. So you have these things on criminal trespasses and stuff like that. But council's been very involved. We've had a number of council members come in, and members of the community. It's really interesting, occurs right here. And a fun one to be at would be on this Thursday, because we have a graduation with two very deserving young people. Beyond that, I want to emphasize that our court is committed to the principles of the Constitution, both federal and state. Good to be here on Constitution Day. And we're also working on the vision and mission of the city of Issaquah. So very much appreciate this. I'm going to give Nikki a chance to talk, but she would threaten me again.
Thank you both for coming, and thank you for the whole team. You guys are amazing. There are a couple more items of special business, so I'll just stay down here and do a couple more proclamations. I'd like to invite Alicia Spinner from the local nonprofit The Circle to the lectern. Welcome, Alicia. This proclamation is for our recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Spanish-speaking nations of the Caribbean. According to the 2020 Census, the Hispanic population of the United States was 62.1 million people, making people of the Hispanic origin the nation's largest ethnic or racial minority, 18.9% of the total U.S. population. Issaquah's diversity and Hispanic population have increased over the last 30 years, from 1990, when 90% of the residents were white and only 2% Hispanic Latino, to more recent times, where 65.7% of our residents are white and 9% are Hispanic Latino. And we commit to embracing diversity and inclusion by paying tribute to Hispanic heritage through education, acknowledgement, and celebration within our community. And this year's theme, Unidos: Inclusivity for a Stronger Nation, encourages us to ensure that all voices are represented and welcome to help build stronger communities and a stronger nation. And it encourages us to reflect on all the contributions Hispanics have made in the past and will continue to make in the future in this community. It is a reminder that we are stronger together. Now therefore, I, Mary Lou Polly, mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2023, to be Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Issaquah, and I urge the community to join in special observance and celebration of Hispanic heritage. And I'm assuming you may want to have a few words? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for this. Thank you for recognizing all the Latinos that were here in Issaquah. With The Circle, we are serving many of the families. We have more of 300 families that we're now, right now, serving from the Latino community. We are organizing a big celebration for the Day of the Dead, November 5th, in the community center. We are already, you know, we have meetings every week, and we have a large group of volunteers, more than 100 volunteers, getting together at this event for all of us. So please go and please keep supporting the Latino community. Thank you. Thank you.
And I did attend that event last year. I believe Councilmember Hunt did as well, a few others, and it was very, very good. It was a mixture of both joy and sorrow, since one of our young Latinos in the community had passed away at that time as well. So it was an extremely moving event. For our last special business, it's ID 1381, East Side Welcoming Week proclamation. And I'd like to invite Economic Development Coordinator Pharrell Otiano to the lectern. Pharrell?
Welcome.
So whereas the east side cities of Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland Redmond, and Sammamish have jointly celebrated East Side Welcoming Week for the past seven years, and whereas these cities recognize the importance of ensuring that all residents feel safe, secure, and welcome, and whereas East King County is one of the most racially and ethnically diverse regions in Washington State, with over 35% of our residents coming from places outside of the United States and 38% of our residents speaking a language other than English at home; and whereas in our highly mobile region, nearly 1 in 5 residents have lived in their current residence for less than one year, and realizing our vision for a welcoming community requires actively addressing the lived experiences of those in the community who do not feel welcome, safe, valued, or included. And whereas historic and current impacts of individual institutional and systemic racism that result in harmful disparities in education, employment, income, housing, criminal justice, and quality of life, as well as a sense of belonging, our community, like others across the nation, has structures, systems, and policies that contribute to injustice, racial inequality, and discriminatory treatment against residents who were born in another country, are Black, Indigenous, other people of color, including those who hold intersectional identities and faith-based cultures, people with visible and invisible disabilities, et cetera, and LGBTQIA. Whereas to capitalize on diversity as an asset, our community must strive to create a culture and environment that ensures everyone can belong and everyone can thrive. So now therefore, we, the mayors of Bellevue, not all here tonight, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Sammamish, Washington, all jointly proclaim September 8th through 17th, 2023, as East Side Welcoming Week, and invite the community to engage in opportunities during East Side Welcoming Week and beyond to learn, connect across differences, and to take joint action to achieve a welcoming, equitable, and inclusive community. Pharrell, did you want to talk about Welcoming Week?
Yes. First of all, permit me to thank the council, the mayor, and the community at large. And to remind you, we have two events. That is, one is on 8th, Friday, at Community Center. And I want to cordially invite all the council members to this event. And the other event for the east side is next week, on Friday, from 12 to 1:00 at Together Center in Redmond. So the event for next week is scheduled to have a guest speaker to come and talk about housing disparities within the East King County. As well, I want to also invite all of you to that event, to come and grace that event with us. Otherwise, thank you so much for this proclamation. Indeed, belonging begins with us.
So the next item of business this evening is audience comments. This is where members of the public may address the council in person or virtually. And those who have signed up in advance to make comments will be called upon first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, you can raise your virtual hand, and our clerk will see that. Or you can send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, press star 3. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. If you're in the room and you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before I close this portion of the meeting, so you did not have to sign up in advance. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. So there are some guidelines for those making comments. Please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, if you are virtual, please unmute your microphone. If you're here in the room, please step up to the lectern in front of the council. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. And please limit comments to five minutes each. If you are attending virtually and you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if the connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you can. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior are not permitted. And resident comments, written and verbal, are a very important aspect of the public process. And the city takes these comments seriously, and we thank you for spending your time tonight to come and join. City Clerk, can you identify the first person up to speak?
Yes, we have seven members of the public signed up to make comments. The first is Liz Tiedeman.
I'm going to get you, maybe Autumn, you can step up. There's a little button on the microphone that we need to press. There we go.
Autumn, thank you.
You can just leave it on now.
For the record, my name is Liz Tiedeman. I live here in Issaquah. And I always finish my homework at the start of class, and so I was still writing my comment, but I can manage. So... I have been trying to understand the through line in council decision-making for a thing that is named FC 025, Secured Fencing for Patrol Vehicles. And I use the whole name because of my background in database design. Calling it FC 025 is how we distinguish that occurrence of a project from other occurrences of projects, and it's important to do that. So I think the first point on the through line of this project is the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Plan. I think this is where the project first shows up with the idea of spending a little more than $114,000. Fast forward to the most recent point in the through line. It's found in Ordinance 3009, a budget amendment dated March 24th, 2023. Exhibit A summarizes that for FC 025, Secured Fencing for Patrol Vehicles, $446,000, in excess of that, was budgeted for 2022. A little more than $25,000 was spent. And so, a little more than $415,000 is reauthorized for FC 025, Secured Fencing for Patrol Vehicles. That's what the ordinance says. So I wonder, how did we get from the idea of spending $114,000 on a secured fencing project to authorize spending well over $400,000? A few more points in the through line tell the story. For example, the adopted budget of 2022 authorized expenses of $282,000. That's quite a bit less than the recent ordinance says was budgeted in 2022. There must be another point in the through line that I haven't found yet, maybe another budget amendment. On February 22nd, 2023, a new through line starts. It is for a project with a distinctly different name and scope. It is a remote access control project. A city employee made a presentation to a council committee describing a problem and offering two options to solve it. I understand the problem, my words, not the employee's words, is that the city can't get replacement parts for the current access control system in the jail. Sometimes the control board gives incorrect information about whether a jail cell is locked or unlocked. I agree, that might be a problem. The presentation also said that a bucket of money had been found in that there was an underspend on payroll in 2022. This bucket would have enough in it to fund a new remote access control project to the tune of something like $435,000. Council committee asked about collaboration with folks affected by the project. Council committee was told that all necessary collaboration had been done. I watched the video again today. With that assurance, council committee voted to move forward with option 1. Council did not go with option 2, which was to take up the question of a new remote control access system in a different year. It is my personal opinion that not all the necessary collaboration had been done by February 22nd. Call it a respectful difference of opinion. So another point in the through line is that on March 7th, council approved Agenda Bill 8517 authorizing the spend. And that resulted in the ordinance. So, another point in the through line, June 5th, we showed up to say there's a number of things that haven't been considered, and I'm very grateful that you took the action of suspending the rules to get a conversation continued. But I'm here today, I think you're going to hear about the progress today, but I'm here to say that all rules of procedure have ways to amend things previously adopted. And I'm here to ask you to amend the thing you did on March 7th, which authorized option 1, because I think option 2 is the one that's needed, given that the scope and effects are not totally understood even yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. That's just a five-minute timer. City Clerk? It was not. It was not. Chirping. Chirping. City Clerk, who's next on the list of speakers this evening? Tina Conforti?
Hello, everyone. I'm Tina Conforti. My address is 1220 Oakwood Place, Northwest Issaquah. I'm here for supporting the new project, not to support the project, but to support the homeless people dinner. I think I have an experience that I went through about six, seven years ago when there was no place to send my daughter, that she's autistic, and she was at home with me. She's 52. She had nothing to do, and I was searching to get a little job or some volunteer work for her. Finally, I find a good place in Issaquah where my daughter, she volunteered over there with me. We cook at home together. She enjoys cooking. She enjoys serving. It's my experience with the community, serving the homeless people. I never had any issue either with my daughter having problems or with the homeless there. I stay there. I buy the food. I serve it. My daughter serves it, thanks to the good people here. So I feel, why put in a fence? I never saw anything happen. Why would we have the fence in? We park right by the kitchen area, the entranceway, to bring the hot food in. How difficult it will be for us to walk far away. And what the fence is too. Who's going to protect it? Nothing could ever happen there. I was there all the time. When on a Sunday, we never had any issue. We had people come in peacefully, eat their dinner, and be respectful to everybody, including my daughter sometimes that she was doing, "Whee!" or screaming. They never raised their voice. I mean, I feel bad for, what is the reason to fence in? Was there any reason? Was anybody not behaving right? I don't feel that's a necessary defense. I think the city should reflect it and spend those money someplace else. Maybe get more help for people they need in the community. Get more help for people who are disabled. Get more help to help the homeless have a safer place to live and not just throw these people off. That's a place they call their home over there, to go and eat their dinner. I feel really frustrated, because we do like to help the community. We do like to help the one in need. And we ask you, city council, mayor, please, don't put the fence there, because it's no need of a fence. Everything has never happened there. I can testify that. When I was there, never happened anything. The homeless are very respectful. They're quiet. They eat their dinner. They enjoy coming in and have people hot food served to them. Where they can go? They have no place to go. You see them on the street. They should be taken off the street and maybe helped them and get them a place where to be. Maybe they need help in, you know, as emotional or mental issues. That's what we needed to reflect on. We need to reflect to help them, put them in a secure place, not to fence in. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. City Clerk, who's next?
Elizabeth Mopin. My name is Elizabeth Mopin. I've been a resident of Issaquah since 1982. That's about 40 years. And I've run a business in Issaquah, and lots of things, very much part of the community. I recently watched a Netflix documentary by Dan Buettner, Secrets of the Blue Zone. And this is about looking at places where an unusually large number of people who've lived over 100 years are found. And that inspired me to think about our community meals program in light of the overall health of our community. In the Blue Zones, Dan found that there was less heart disease and dementia, as well as increased longevity and life satisfaction. Diets did tend to be more plant-based, but the key factors were more about lifestyle rather than a specific diet. These places had environments that encouraged walking and gentle exercise, communal gatherings with friends and family around tasty meals, daily rituals to unwind, and not a lot of worry. The communities encouraged people to put their gifts to work for the good of the community and to invest in a circle of friends. Our community meals programs bring people together for tasty meals on a regular basis, allowing for enduring friendships to form. They're located in a walkable part of town, close to public transit. They provide opportunities for people to use their culinary skills and their gifts for hospitality in meaningful ways that enhance life in Issaquah. My appeal to you is to ask that we allow all this positive stuff not to be overshadowed by a fence which proclaims worry and distrust, but to find other... by a fence which proclaims worry and distrust, but to find other ways to make the parking lots and the hall feel like safe places for our first responders and for our whole community. There must be something that's less hostile-looking than a fence. And we haven't really gotten any data from the city to support the need for a fence. So, along with my friends, I really encourage you to rethink this whole fence idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. City clerk, who's signed up next?
Uh, one of our virtual attendees, Corby Kessler. Corby, I will be making you a panelist now, so you should have the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on. Corby, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks, Corby.
Thank you. I just wanted to pass along a compliment. I'm Corby Kessler, Executive Director of the Downtown Issaquah Association. And I just want to applaud all the partners engaged in Welcome Week. The city, DIA, Isqwa Highlands Council, Visit Isqwa, Isqwa Library, and I'm sure I'm missing someone, have really come together as a team to pull something really memorable together. I, I think the camaraderie and the service orientation we've shown each other as we plan this event speaks to the very tenet of Welcome Week, inclusion and respect for all cultures and points of view. Diversity, inclusion are personal and professional values of mine, and I'm proud of my city, proud to be part of a team that values the uniqueness of one another. I think we're really on a roll with our messaging, first the troll and sustainability and now diversity. I just wanted to pass along my compliments and great work, everyone. So thank you for just letting me speak for a short minute. I appreciate you.
Thank you for joining us tonight, Corby. Uh, city clerk, who is next on our list of speakers?
Marilyn Ottinger. Hello, I'm Marilyn Ottinger, 18220 Southeast 43rd Court. I've lived in Issaquah since 1986. Since 2007, I've coordinated the Thursday lunches at the community hall, and in 2008, we began weekend meals. I'm proud to live in a city that provides free hot meal 365 days a year. At the end of the June 5th council meeting, I heard that the community hall users were going to be included in brainstorming alternatives to the proposed fencing behind the community hall. The only idea presented at the August 10th meeting, which was a follow-up meeting, was a plan to drive up, buzz the police dispatcher to open a vehicle gate, drive in, park, carry out the first load to a pedestrian gate where you'd buzz the dispatcher again. No alternatives, other alternatives were discussed. So I want you to imagine 70-year-olds with arms loaded with food on a rainy evening, standing at a gate that you're supposed to push a button to alert a dispatcher to unlock the door to allow you to get to the kitchen door. This process may need to be repeated maybe four, five, or six times till the car was unloaded, then you'd have to park the car on the street and buzz the dispatcher to open the gate again. And this would need to be repeated for everybody who is providing food for the meals. Hopefully, the dispatcher isn't answering emergency calls. And try imagining asking your parents to do this. As proposed, this would be what is required. So we're addressing you, city council members, because you are the ones that the citizens have entrusted with the authority to reconsider this project, which is solving a security problem, which we have seen no evidence exists, while creating an onerous situation that we don't need or want. So as it stands, you're choosing fencing over a meal program, because if you put barriers in the way of elderly volunteers, they'll stop volunteering, and the number of individuals that prepare and serve 1,000 free meals each month will wither, but the need will not. So here's an idea that came out of my own personal brainstorming. If we must build a fence, use it to enclose the police parking lot, which includes 17 parallel parking spots plus six more adjacent to Memorial Field. Do not extend the fencing behind the community hall. There is a natural break between the two properties. Do not extend the fencing to the parking lot behind the community hall. This seems like a reasonable compromise. I hope you agree.
Thank you, Marilyn. City clerk, who's signed up next?
Norb Ziegler.
Good evening. My name is Norb Ziegler. I live at 4617 225th Avenue in Sumamish. I have been a longtime volunteer in the Issaquah community, over 15 years, at the Food and Clothing Bank, at the Hatchery, and today I'm representing or am a volunteer for the community meals program. I said last month, when I spoke to you in June, that I am opposed to the fencing proposal, which totally eliminates convenient parking and access to the back door of the community hall. And at that meeting, we gave very many examples, some of which Marilyn mentioned today, about how difficult it is if you eliminate that parking. This access is critical to the community meals program, which has been an important offering in this community for close to 20 years, and as Marilyn mentioned, serving close to 1,000 meals a month. I'm back tonight because there has been no satisfactory solution that we're aware of. So I brought one to propose to you. So my solution, first of all, starts with something that the city has already implemented. The city has recently installed signs in the police department parking lot and the fire department parking lot. The signs read, "Parking for police and fire department vehicles only." Hopefully, that is working as intended. Second, let's earmark six more parking spots near the back of the community hall that can be easily used by community meals volunteers, and post some additional signs. Parking for community hall use only. That makes us happy. Hopefully, it makes you happy. End of story. But perhaps not, because we've raised the issue, or the city has raised the issue, of security issues. So if they are really a concern, install two to three cameras in those parking areas that can be monitored by the police department. And if that's not enough, you can also install a sign, "Area monitored 24 hours a day by the Issaquah Police Department." That certainly should be a deterrent and provide the police department with necessary information to follow up on any security problems. And as a final possible security move, to build that fence that was mentioned earlier that would just, and I guess it was proposed in a project back in 1920, as I understand it, to build a limited fence just to protect the police patrol vehicles only. So as the old Roy Rogers song says, and many of you are probably too young to remember, but "Don't fence me in." So I think this solves our problem, at least from our point of view. The police and fire have reserved parking for their personal vehicles. The community hall volunteers have six parking spots with easy access to the community hall. It saves the city close to $100,000. You don't have to build a fence. And the people that have been working on this project are now freed up to work on other important city projects. That's my solution. Easy peasy. I'm not sure what easy peasy means, but people say it, but let's just do it. Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Norb. City clerk, I don't have anybody else on my printed list. Do you have somebody else?
Yes, one more. Dave Wagner.
Good evening, council. David Wagner, 360 Northwest Dogwood Street. And I do remember that song, Norb. I also remember Roy singing "Happy Trails" to you. That wonderful memory. Just for council's edification, if you ever get over the Hatchery and you see the aquarium room with the large aquarium, you can blame the two of us, because we're the guys who came up with it. Just want to remind you that September the 15th, there will be a flag that will fly under the U.S. flag. That flag is the POW MIAs flag. And I just want to remind you that we do have two MIAs from this wonderful city of Issaquah. I know both of them knew their life story. Emmett is the one who, his nickname was Skip. He was a navigator on a C-130 on a special bombing run. Then the plane was exploded. They never found his body. He never came home to Issaquah. So every time that flag flies over there, it means a great deal to me, because this community that I love recognizes that he gave his life, and he hasn't come home, and our wish is that someday he will. Hence, that flag flies. To my friends that are here with me tonight, I don't want to talk about the fence. Autumn is grateful for that. But I do want to talk about something that's very important. I have chaired and been part of an Alcoholics Anonymous meeting that has been both at the old Bleachers, then moved over to the Senior Center, and now meets in Community Hall. So I've been with that organization as its spokesman for, since 1998. That's a long time. We invite new people who really need help to be able to stop drinking, to come into our midst. This fence, and the whole idea of the fence, is placing something that you have no idea yourself what that means. It's scary. It's really scary in a time when those people are reaching out for help for everything that they can possibly do to stop a terrible, terrible disease. I'm asking you to give that fence a rethought because of what it's going to do to that wonderful group. I've already volunteered that we'll move. If the fence continues, we'll find someplace else that's welcoming, because that's going to be a very, very scary thing for them to have to face. Thank you for listening tonight. By the way, the Ms. lost.
Thank you, David. City clerk, is there anyone else who has signed up or is raising their hand online to indicate a desire to speak?
We do have four members of the public virtually, and none of them are indicating a desire to speak.
So I'll check in the room as well. You've heard from many speakers. Is there anyone else who would like to get up and address the council? They're very friendly. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Jan Smith, 4450 189th Place, southeast in Issaquah. And I've been a member of the Issaquah community for over 20 years and a participant in the community meal program for most of that time, a little bit less, but from the beginning as well. And it just occurred to me this week that there's been, I think, a wonderful event that has happened in Issaquah with the building of the troll. And I'm from Chicago, and a lot of my family still lives there. And the troll was a huge event in Chicago. And when my sister knew that it was going to come here, she had saw that it was coming to Issaquah, she made sure everybody in the family is following the Danish artist on Instagram. And we went to see it being built. And I've seen it three times, and the last two times, there was a line almost a half a mile long for people to wait and take a picture in front of that troll. And I'm going to say that it's such a wonderful feeling to be there. These are people from not only Issaquah, but all over. There's families, there's kids on bikes, there's people who don't speak English, there's, I mean, it's a joyful event. And to me, that is the opposite of the fence. I mean, I think that's the part of Issaquah that I like to think is the true part of our community. And the idea of a fence is scary, as was noted tonight. It is a barrier. And what was spoken also of people's well-being, longevity, is community. And I think if we could spend our time and our inspiration to how we can develop that and meet each other and eat together in a barrier-free place, I think that means more than what would be the message that people see when they see a fence. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for getting up to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening who hasn't had a chance to come up? Well, thank you all for coming tonight and taking your time to share with council, online and in person. We heard several different topics tonight. The most speakers came to talk about the remote access control project. The speakers were in support of the community dinners and the good and respectful behavior of the meals volunteers and the guests that come to join them. They're in support of reconsideration of the project and pointed out that fencing can be scary for those who are reaching out for help. We also had a speaker talk about her gratitude for all of those different groups in town that are participating, participating in Welcome Week. Heard that the Missing in Action flag will again be flying soon on the city's flagpoles, and a little bit about the troll event, which has been stealing a bit of the headlines. I'm just going to thank you all for coming and also say two things that make me a little sad. And one is that there is the thought that the security might be for the security who might be attending the programs, that the people who might be causing problems, you know, that's just not it. That is not it at all. I think the program you have is amazing, the people that come are respectful, and your volunteers are hugely respectful. So that breaks my heart that that perception is out there, that it might be that people who are using the facility itself are causing issues, because that's, that's just not in our consideration at all. But also, I just want to thank you for keeping coming and sharing your comments and your opinions as the progress, as the process works forward. We agree, should be welcoming. So thank you for coming. Thank you to staff for coming as well. And we're going to move to our next agenda item this evening. I just want to remind folks, especially even folks that are here too, that you can submit additional comments to city council at any time at citycouncil@isqawa.gov. And the next item on our agenda this evening will be the consent calendar. And I do not have any comments on consent calendar items tonight, but are there any committee chairs or chair designees who would like to report on any of the calendar items? Not seeing an indication, so. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, if authorized. Longtime residents, right? If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you very much. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would like to remove for consideration AB 8692 Arch Trust Fund one-time additional contribution.
Thank you. Since there is no regular business this evening scheduled, we'll just put this item under regular business and deal with it after the review of the consent calendar. So the, I'm looking to see if there is someone to make a motion that includes the fact that one of the items is being asked to be brought down. Council president?
Yes, I move to approve the consent calendar with the item removed.
Here you go.
AB 8692 Arch Trust Fund one-time additional contribution.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes 6-0 with all present. The next item under is regular business, and so we will go to AB 8692. The next item under is regular business, and so we will go to A B eight six nine two Arch Trust Fund one-time contribution. I don't know if I have the title right. And City Clerk, do you want to give us a little heads up about how we will handle this this evening?
The council member who pulled the item down could start by making comments. We do have staff available as well. Jen Davis Hayes is with us virtually.
That is great. Councilmember Mertz.
And if it pleased the council, I could give a quick context on this because it's something that came out of services.
I'm looking, seeing nods, so let's go ahead and get that context.
Okay. As part of I D fourteen fifty-seven Affordable Housing Capital Funding and Pioneer Program, we have, at the August ninth, twenty twenty-three Services Safety and Parks Committee, the administration made the recommendation for the one-time allocation to the Arch Trust Fund as part of the Affordable Housing Fund discussion. Committee was supportive of this allocation and directed the administration to pursue a budget amendment. Next steps, if approved, a budget amendment would allocate three hundred thousand dollars to Arch, be utilized as part of the trust fund.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I pulled this off consent because when I was reading the packet, I found myself wanting more information about this item. And I believe that affordable housing and, and how we get the affordable housing that our community needs is one of the most pressing issues before our council. And we also had previously discussed affordable housing in a bigger context at the council level. And so, and we will have another conversation about how we spend the other part of this funding coming up in October. So I pulled this down to ask a few questions and given the community interest and the importance to the community of this topic, thought best to have that in a council meeting rather than through a string of emails.
Questions for the committee or questions for staff? Or both?
I think they are probably more for staff, but I also welcome feedback, of course, from the committee members that did consider this in committee.
That is great. And we have Jen Davis Hayes here, who is the staff in charge. So I want to fire away with your questions.
Okay. My first question was about the timing of this. We have an upcoming meeting in October, which is coming up, where we're also going to be looking at the rest of the funding. And usually if there's, usually we would consider the whole package if possible to have a more holistic view. So I wondered about why this timing was important, that it be on the consent this evening.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Great question. When we did, when we were talking about the investment of all the affordable, affordable housing funding, there was a broad agreement again for the Arch Trust Fund allocation, where the Strategic Opportunity Fund still had some more details that needed to be figured out and discussed. And so when I talked to the executive director, Lindsay, oh my God, this place got her last name. I want to say Walsh, that's not it. Sorry, Masters. Sorry, too many Lenzies in my head. I think there's like four of them now with the city or related. Asking her about the timing, what would be most appropriate, looking at if it would be something that would be helpful to have some of the money this year, some next year. And what she responded is that the current trust fund applications are, are being accepted now. They've had some pre-meetings with all interested parties, and there has been a higher-than-normal request rate. So she expressed that if she had access to this funding sooner than later, they would be able to invest that three hundred thousand dollars immediately into projects so they could move more projects forward. So we thought that would make sense to put this, again, this forward sooner than later. Again, it's only half of our House Bill fourteen oh six, which is the state pass-through money. So we still have access to some of that resources for our own investing here in the city. But we believe that the investing in regional affordable housing is an important part of what we do as well.
That's my round.
Thank you. What, for future use, so this is a one-time allocation, for future consideration, what are other things that this fund could be, could be used on that, that could be considered?
The housing trust fund at Arch or the fund that we're talking about creating? I'm sorry, I just want to be clear on the question.
The funds that we are creating.
Okay. So right now, again, we're in the development phase, but we are, and we will bring this information to council at the committee, the whole meeting on October ninth. We are going back to Services Safety and Parks Committee on the, this month on the nineteenth. So what we are looking at is prioritizing preservation, community partnerships, and the transit-oriented development. And so we are looking at creating some more details around the criteria and priorities around sustainability, equity, et cetera, for the fund. So again, we are still working on all those details, but we will be bringing that back on the nineteenth of September, the ninth, and then continuing conversation at a full council meeting if that moves forward.
Was that your answer to your question, or are you looking for something else?
Well, it's, I think it's part of the answer to the question. I guess the, so why was the recommendation then to do the three hundred thousand dollars for this and then the other portion, which is also, this was about half, to do the other portion for those other projects? And, and I'm asking because we're allocating part now, even though we will be having this other part of the conversation later. So I think it is still pertinent to this decision.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that clarification. So the, the House Bill fourteen oh six funds, again, which are the pass-through funds, are the, are a little bit more flexible than House Bill fifteen oh nine, which is the one point one percent sales tax. And so as far as what, what makes more sense to contribute to Arch Trust Fund, to allow them to utilize, it's the fourteen oh six money. So we know that of the fifteen cities of Arch, cities, ten of them are contributing, are basically passing through their money to the Arch Trust Fund. We, in the, in our strategic fund, we are looking at the entire portion of the fifteen oh ninety funding and again, partially of the fourteen oh six money. So again, we wanted to keep some of that money to be, if we had some programs that we wanted to invest in here at the city. Because as you know, we have a pilot program through Motel Six through, that's funded through next year. If there's an additional needs that we have that wouldn't fit the fifteen ninety funding criteria, we wanted to have some of those resources. So again, this is the, the quote-unquote color, the type, the, of money that would be best to allocate to, to Arch in line with other cities in our region. The two, the, so the other five cities that are not contributing out right now, Bellevue plans to do, make their contributions next year, Kirkland in the next biennium, Mercer Island is doing rental assistance, and the two other cities actually don't collect the funds because they did not pass a resolution to do so. Is that a little bit more in line with what you were inquiring?
Yes, that, that is helpful. So one more question. How, how are we going to hear back from Arch about how this benefits Issaquah's residents? So specifically looking at how we're going to be tracking the benefits and hearing back
That's a great question. So every year, Arch is required to go to all the cities to get approval for all of their trust fund allocations. So they, the application closes September fifteenth. They will be doing their due diligence and making those recommendations and coming back in December, at the end of this year, for city council review and approval. We also can, typically, Arch comes and talks to council. We may not have had them the last couple of years because of COVID, but we could invite them in the first quarter of next year to talk about this and hope more holistic affordable housing if, if desired. And then, of course, they do quarterly reports that are actually posted on the web, so we can make sure that those are shared when they are published. And that gives an update about each of the projects that are in that film.
Well, I would certainly be interested in having Arch come, as was just mentioned. It has been a while due to external factors, but that would be, I think, helpful. So, thank you.
Yeah. Can I ask one more question, then I'll go right to, there's two of you who'd like to speak. Jen, you mentioned something interesting I'm not sure I've ever seen in the Arch report before, but based on this idea that proximity to our city is also a benefit versus having it built in our city if we don't have a project ready to go, do they report out on, in the property they manage, how many people work in different cities so we could understand if this was helping people who had a job in Issaquah, they didn't get to live in Issaquah, but they're in Bellevue? Like, do we get any of that proximate information from them?
I do not know, but I will ask them. And if they don't click that, there may be a way to do that. Because I do believe every once in a while, they do surveys of their residents, so I'll see if that's available.
Okay. I think it was Councilmember De Michele and then Deputy Council President.
Thank you. I really appreciate the questions and, and the conversation. I did support giving this donation to, or it's not exactly a donation, but allocation to, to Arch for a couple of reasons. And one was because Lindsay Masters did say that they had more requests than that they could fund. And if we were able to give it now, this would help with their allocations for this year. And I wanted to share, I had a conversation with Amir Chavany on an unrelated topic, and that's the reason you haven't seen this email, but I wanted to share. It was a question from County Councilmember Sarah Perry regarding the Motel Six project. And in his response, Amir said, as a recent example, last week, a longtime resident of Tennessee Four moved into Plymouth Crossing, the new permanent supportive housing building in East Gate by way of City of Issaquah referral. The city received three total referral opportunities for this new Plymouth housing project. So that is just a very narrow picture because that's just related to the Motel Six project. But when we open up housing in other parts of East King County, it does open up opportunities for people in Issaquah. And so I was supportive of the allocation for that reason. And I think, you know, we see that the East Gate project, the big campus that they're building, is providing opportunities for people in Issaquah. So that was the reason that I stood behind that.
That's a great share.
Yeah.
Deputy Council President?
Thank you. It seems like most of my questions are being answered, but I'm going to touch on them briefly again. Jen, I just want to thank you for being very speedy in your reply to my, my questions earlier, by the way, especially because I waited until the last minute to submit questions. One of them was about the timing and whether there was kind of urgency around this. And you've answered that by saying, you know, there's a little bit more demand and interest for dollars from Arch lately, so I appreciate that explanation. The other one was, one of the policy questions that the committee considered was, you know, do you agree with this allocation for Arch? And earlier in the slideshow, there was a kind of a sub-question about whether we wanted to be specific about Issaquah or if it can be regionally, so whether or not we want to kind of put some ties on those dollars, essentially. You've touched on this a little bit, but I'm wondering if you can kind of talk us through some more of the trade-offs between specifying that we want this to go toward Issaquah-specific affordable housing or, or regional housing? How should we be thinking about that trade?
Thanks. That's a great question because, of course, we would love to have all the affordable housing we can, we could use here in Issaquah. But for right now, again, the, look, thinking about the Strategic Opportunity Fund as those, those resources are going to be invested in Issaquah. So again, having a contribution that is for a broader east side was part of the thinking that it's, you know, part of our regional partnership to make sure that we are funding projects, again, in every city so that when something comes, comes forward in our own community, there's an opportunity, there's an opportunity to be funded from potentially Kirkland or Redmond's contribution. Right now, we don't have affordable housing that's besides the transit-oriented development that is looking to receive funding. So if we did not, if we did allocate it and say it had to be spent in Issaquah, it would sit and, and not be spent. And not sure how many years that would not be spent. The Transit Orient Development project has already received a previous Arch Trust Fund award. So again, this money then is going to, for projects that are going to be started sooner and adding more affordable housing in our region sooner than waiting. Again, when we have projects that are, are of interest or to develop in Issaquah, we'll have the Strategic Opportunity Fund, we'll have the opportunity to go to the Arch Trust Fund. And again, seeing that we're good partners, where we're contributing money to help support in other cities, that, that kind of comes back and pays back us in the long run.
Do we have any more questions? Okay. Going to see if someone would care to make a motion. Council President, if you have it.
I move to authorize the inclusion of a one-time allocation of three hundred thousand dollars from the state pass-through funding for affordable and supportive housing to the Regional Coalition for Housing, Arch Housing Trust Fund, in a subsequent twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Council President, Councilmember De Michele, Deputy Council President.
I'll just be brief. I think contributing to a project, whether it's in our city or regionally, benefits everyone in the area and getting the money out to projects that can be groundbroken and able to house people quicker is important. I appreciate that we're having a longer conversation about some of our other areas, but I'm comfortable with this allocation at this time.
That's Madam De Michele.
I just want to point out that in the packet that we received, the council committee, we did get a list of all the projects that are under consideration, the ones that have already been funded but haven't been built yet, and the ones that are funded and the ones who are, could be funded. And so if we can get that list to everybody, I think it would be really helpful. And, you know, it would always be good for us to get Lindsay Masters here to talk to us.
It is, yes.
Because she's just a wealth of information about what's happening with affordable housing. So I think that maybe that would be a good idea. But at any rate, I'll be supporting this motion tonight. Thank you.
Deputy Council President?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to support the motion tonight as well. I just, one of my concerns, reading the Agenda Bill and then going back, watching the committee meeting, was I think there was a little bit of a missed opportunity to see all of our strategic investments in affordable housing up on the same screen or board together. We know there's going to be a Strategic Opportunity Fund, but we don't necessarily know what the, that's a tool, but we don't know necessarily what we'll be investing in that yet. So I thought it would have been helpful to be able to see, okay, well, we can contribute to Arch, and then we also have this range of other contributions. And we can see, you know, what is the spectrum of support that we're actually supporting? What are the different initiatives and strategic opportunities that we're supporting? And I think it would have been great to be able to press pause on this. We all love Arch. It sounds like a great investment, and like I said, I'm going to be supporting it. But it would have just been great to be able to look at it all together. I completely understand, though, that if Arch is having a lot of interest in a lot of, an unusual amount of interest in those dollars, we want to make sure that they have the ability to meet the need of our region quickly, too. So I just think it was a missed opportunity. It's no one's fault. And hopefully, we can kind of have that kind of touch again on that broader discussion when we talk about more affordable housing investments down the line. But again, I'll be supporting it. Thanks. And thanks for all your hard work on this, Jen.
That's my Mertz.
Thank you. I think there is a good slide from the Services Safety and Parks meeting that does summarize a high-level view of our affordable housing effort. And it shows anticipated revenues through twenty twenty-four through various mechanisms. It includes Motel Six and behavioral health staff, of course, the T O D O C construction engagement. And it shows that this three hundred thousand dollars, although it is half of H bill fourteen oh six pass-through, it's like two percent of our overall housing-related efforts, which is both to say that, you know, we're not putting all of our money in one place, and to show just the breadth of things the city is doing. And it's one of the things when I, I will trot out my fourteen-year card once again and say, you know, we're just doing so much more now than at any other time that I've been on council. And I look forward to ongoing conversations, but, you know, there's And I look forward to ongoing conversations, but you know, there is, if anybody wants to see the magnitude of it, it's very nicely put together on this slide, and so I am warmly supporting this measure this evening.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, and thank you to council for the discussion. I did pull this down because I wanted to have some questions answered, and also because we are going to have the other part of this discussion in October, so it felt like if I, if I wanted to go into that conversation with the whole picture, I would be, I would benefit from talking through this part of the decision now. I appreciate that. I appreciate the reasons that were, the, the answers to my questions. I also would like, as I said, it would be great to have Arch come and, and speak with us as a council when, when that's possible, and it would also be great to have that information back about how these projects, about how this funding is used for the projects and how that benefits Issaquah residents. And I also really appreciated the mayor's thoughts on how we might get a, a big-picture view about, you know, not only people that live in Issaquah, but work in Issaquah, and how it's benefiting our community, so we can, so we can understand the benefits of the spending. But I will be supporting. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? Will we read the motion? It is to authorize inclusion of a one-time allocation of $300,000 from the state pass-through funding for affordable and supportive housing to a regional coalition for housing, or Arch, the Housing Trust Fund, in a subsequent 2023-24 budget amendment. It's been moved and, oh, sorry, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That carries 6-0. The next item of business this evening is committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Thursday at 3:00 PM, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will be meeting at the Hilton. We changed locations from the Hilton to the other hotels in town, depending on our, our floating host. September 6th, Wednesday, the Public Affairs Committee for the Cascade Water Alliance will be meeting. Additional details are on the website for the Cascade Water Alliance. And on the 27th, the Cascade Water Alliance Board Meeting will be occurring for those that are interested in attending. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. All of my committees were on hiatus along with us, but I do want to announce that the Eastside Transportation Partnership will take part in a joint transportation meeting this Friday morning at 9 o'clock at the Puget Sound Regional Council Meeting Room, and this will be the only time this year that all of the regional transportation groups have gotten together. So I think it's going to be a very, very interesting gathering. So I'll be participating in that, and on September 14th, Eastside Human Services Forum will have its next board meeting, and that's my, end of my report.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On August 21st, the Management Committee of the Salmon Recovery Council of Raya 8, which is the name of our watershed, met, and I serve on that committee. We are going to be recommending a budget to the full Salmon Recovery Council, and it is very similar to previous budgets. The city's contribution will be very similar as well, and some of the adjustments were to increase for cost of living, for example, so things that are, are expected and standard. One other thing that we discussed was there are some community groups that do not, they are not part of the inter-local agreement, so they're not paying into Raya 8, but they are members of the Salmon Recovery Council, and they participate in discussions and provide feedback. And we've, a few of those community groups have, are no longer working and, like, no longer operational, and so we are looking now for if there are other community groups, new community groups. We also have a new focus on equity and, and making policy decisions focusing on equity, so if there are community groups that could help us with that. So if you have thoughts on that, about community groups that might, that we might benefit from having in our discussions on the Salmon Recovery Council, I would appreciate that. And then I have one other, oh, the next meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council will be July, sorry, September 21st. And then there will be a meeting of the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee, a subcommittee of this council, tomorrow, September 6th. And we have two items. One is ID 1404, Comprehensive Plan Update, Housing and Land Use. This is the specific part of the comprehensive plan on housing and land use, but the whole comprehensive plan will be, update will be coming back to council. And then there is ID 1528, which are amendments to Title 18 Development Table Update. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Ray, just a reminder, had an excused absence this evening. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, September 13th, at Renton City Hall at 7:00 PM. The agenda is still to be determined. And then Services Safety and Parks next meets at 6:30 Tuesday, September 19th, which is after the next regular council meeting. That agenda is also to be determined. This concludes.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Deputy Council President?
Thank you. The next meeting of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors is next Thursday, September 14th, at 4:00 PM at our headquarters on Newport Way Northwest. Also, there is no agenda set so far, but I just want to let council know that the mid-bi, our mid-biennial budget update for Eastside Fire and Rescue is coming up. We have been told so far that there won't be any impact to the partners, but that is to be determined, I suppose. So we'll just keep you in the loop with how the biennial budget process goes at EFR, and I will go from there. And yeah, that's the end of my report.
Council President?
Thank you. The next meeting of the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board is, planning board, is on Thursday at 10:00 AM, where we will review the Pierce County countywide planning policies, and that is the only item on our agenda. That concludes my report.
Thank you. So the next item on business this evening is the mayor's report, which I will pull up. There are two executive session items listed on tonight's agenda, however, Item B, regarding pending potential litigation, has been delayed and is now scheduled for a special city council meeting on September 11th, after the committee of the whole council meeting. An executive session will be held tonight to discuss property acquisition per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NB, and the item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow an open session. You heard a little bit tonight about the troll. We were part of the Northwest Troll Project, and the troll in Issaquah, Jacob Two Trees is his name. So the City of Issaquah is honored to be an official site for the Northwest Troll Project. Way of the Bird King is the name of the entire project, and to welcome renowned recycle artist Thomas Dambro's latest creation, Jacob Two Trees, to the city's reindeer trail. Jacob Two Trees was unveiled in an informal and very well-attended ceremony on Friday, September 1st, with the artist team and Snoqualmie Tribal Council members, joining me in providing welcoming remarks and underscoring the project's message of environmental stewardship and sustainability. The sculpture will be on-site at the reindeer trail for a minimum of three years. I would like to thank our partners, community members, and volunteers that work together to make this project possible, including the Scan Design Foundation, the Paul G. Allen Family Foundation, the Issaquah Arts Commission, and a cross-departmental team within the city. We're appreciative of the Snoqualmie Tribe's contribution to this project, the entire Snoqualmie cultural team for their sharing with the Thomas Dambro artists, artists team, and especially Ginger de Los Angeles for her beautiful cedar weaving, which is incorporated into this project. For more information on the project, you can visit the NWtrolls.org website. There are a couple of upcoming community events. We did talk earlier this evening about the Issaquah Welcomes You event, which will be Friday, September 8th, on the lawn outside of Issaquah Community Center. So come to get, residents can come together for a free family-friendly, friendly event to celebrate the cultural diversity in our community in honor of Welcoming America Week. Festivities include an African fashion show, music, performing arts, world dances, children-focused activities, informational booths, and food trucks. Wearing traditional dress is encouraged, and everyone is welcome. Issaquah Welcomes You Story Stroll is on. We invite our youngest community members and their families to read and walk our latest story stroll, featuring the book Cheer, A Book to Celebrate Community, by Uncle Ian Aurora. It is opening on September 8th. The story stroll will be featured along Front Street, starting at the library and ending at Alder Street. The Issaquah Highlands will also be hosting a story stroll, which begins at the front of Village Green Park. For more information on either of these and other Issaquah Welcomes You events, you can visit issaquawat.gov/welcomes. And the Salmon on Sunset Celebration is coming up. The Friends of Issaquah Salmon Hatchery, or also Fish, will host the Second Annual Salmon on Sunset Celebration, which will highlight live salmon spawning September 16th. Attendees will be able to see the salmon up close as they travel to the Issaquah Hatchery. In addition to viewing the salmon spawning, those who attend Salmon on Sunset can tune into live music. There will also be a rubber duck derby in the salmon raceway, and for more information on that, you can visit issaquawat.gov. Issaquah Highlands is having a garage sale, and whether it's called a yard sale or a garage sale, it's a great summer tradition. Check out the garage sales throughout the Issaquah Highlands, one of only two times per year on September 16th. And that concludes the mayor's report. Good of the Order, are there any items for Good of the Order? Yeah? Councilmember De Michelle?
So as a member of the Influence the Choice Group, you should have all received an invitation to the Action Forum for Youth, which is Thursday, September 20th, I believe that's, or maybe it's Wednesday. Well, either way, September 20th in the morning, and again, it will feature a review of the Healthy Youth Survey results, and also a discussion about the health of young people in our community. So please look for that invitation, and if you didn't get it, we'll make sure to make, make sure you get it, and we hope that all of you will be able to attend. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Council President?
Just a reminder that the farmer's market listening session on September 30th is coming up quickly now, it's already September. I sent out another reminder email, should be in your inboxes a few hours ago. We've heard from almost everyone, and a few people are waiting to get their schedules, that's totally fine. If you could let us know by, I think Monday is September 11th, is that right? Yeah, by Monday, our next council meeting. Whether shift one or shift two works best for you, that'd be great, and then Lindsay and I are just going to fill in wherever is needed. Yeah, looking forward, it should be a fun, should be a fun listening session.
That's great. If there's no other Good of the Order, there are some upcoming council meetings. September 11th is the committee of the whole council meeting, and the anticipated agenda items are emergency management. Immediately following the committee of the whole meeting will be a special city council meeting to conduct an executive session. On September 18th, it's the regular city council meeting, and the anticipated agenda items include parks and community services department, summer highlights, shelter holdings, and the preliminary plots. And just an item I think I forgot to include in my mayor's report is that I will be leaving on Sunday for a sister city visit to Shoshaw in Morocco. The sister city's commission would never forgive me if I didn't say something before I left, which means that council president will be chairing that September 18th regular city council meeting. The next item is an executive session, and as mentioned earlier, there are, there are two executive sessions item listed, items listed tonight, however, Item B, regarding pending potential litigation, has been delayed and is now scheduled for a special city council meeting on September 11th, after the committee of the whole council meeting. The city council will now recess into executive session to discuss property acquisition per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NB, and the item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow in the open session, and please note that executive sessions are closed to the public. So we will now recess into executive session at 8:25 PM.